Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, December 9th. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Great, thank you.
Bruce, when you do the Pledge of Allegiance, you vanish.
I've got a flag in my front yard, so I look to that.
I love it. I love it. Suddenly with your background, you magically disappear.
So, moving on to my update, I think the most exciting thing was that we did complete the issuance of our bonds and notes last week. We got very attractive yields on both of them. A press release went out, I think, a few days after that. But it was just a very successful offering. I want to congratulate Stacy and her team for all the hard work that always goes into this. And it's always hitting right around the time when we're starting budget, both on the Board of Ed side and the town side. So I know it's a lot in terms of workload and things like that. But she does a great job. Also commend Bill Lindsay, who's our advisor from UNISAD, our bond advisor. Great job again. So we're excited to see that happen. And also just want to confirm to the public that we do have the public presentations for Academy scheduled for January 6th and January 8th. They'll be held at Neck River Elementary School. And information will be posted on the town calendar this week. They will also be hybrid. So people are welcome to watch the presentations also remotely. And that's it on my end. Any other comments or reports?
I feel like we just- Just remind everybody that the second public input session for the Surf Club is going to be this week on Thursday. The format is going to be the same as the first one. So it's a very much an open house. There's no formal presentation. It's 4:30 to, what, 6 o'clock at the senior center? So don't feel like if you can't get there at 4:30, you shouldn't come. You can come at 5:30. You can come at 5 o'clock. Whenever you can fit it into your schedule, please do attend.
Yeah, and the other one was very well attended. I will say that. And I think people enjoy the opportunity to come in person and do it. So if you can't make it for whatever reason, there will be an opportunity to do an online survey after this next public info session. So, sorry Jen, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to say, the CIP Capital Improvement Program Committee, we had our first meeting last night. And just want to give a reminder to members of the public that the first public hearing of the CIP will be taking place tomorrow, Wednesday, at 6:30. And that will be at Town Campus.
Begin again, huh? Good stuff. So I have a bunch of updates. Bear with me. Strap it in unless Al, unless you wanted to go before me. You're welcome to. I have a couple of big updates here. So Board of Ed, they started second trimester last Friday, working on the budget, which will be presented to the Board of Selectmen on January 13th. This upcoming Tuesday evening, the Board will receive an updated enrollment projection report. And football played their semifinal game yesterday and won handily. See how I did that? And then members of the Board of Ed attended the CAPE Conference in November, where they received the CAPE Board of Distinction Award, Level 2. This is the highest level award for board leadership. And Madison was among a handful of boards to receive this level of distinction. So that is that. And then let me just jump, just bear with me. From the Library Board of Trustees standpoint, they've got a fundraising update. Several fundraising events were conducted. And appeals carried out by the library staff and Board of Trustees, including the Giving Tuesday Appeal, the Annual December Appeal, a Sip and Shop event on 11/20, and a Novel Pairing event on 12/10. In addition, on the fundraising side, Susan Frankenbach was hired in October as part-time Development Director to investigate grants and other fundraising opportunities for the library. From a policy standpoint, they made some updates to open reporting and protection, document retention, and investment. And then they had some good news to share. In the LION Consortium, capital L-I-O-N, Scranton ranked number three for overdrive, ebooks and audio usage behind two other much larger libraries, and also the third highest town in active patrons. The library received a grant from Allen Loeb Foundation, designated for animal-related programs. The funds, $7,000 annually for the next five years will be used to support programming focused on animals for children, teens, and adults. And then Madison Youth and Family update. So lots going on, obviously. As we enter the holiday season, Madison Youth and Family Services is courting a full slate of support programs to meet families' needs across the community. The following is an overview of participation and partnership to date. So they did the Blizzard of Giving Card Program. They currently have 48 families representing 89 children enrolled in our Blizzard of Giving Card Program. All district schools are participating. We'll be delivering their collected gift cards to Madison Youth and Family this week. Our goal is to include a $100 food card in every family's gift card packet, ensuring additional support during the holiday season. This program continues to be a true community-wide initiative with contributions from the schools, neighbor-to-neighbor, and numerous community volunteers. Holiday Trees, they've received 17 holiday trees generously donated by the Exchange Club and Neighbor-to-Neighbor, which will be distributed to Madison families in need. Warm the Children, through the Rotary Cubs Warm the Children Program, 30 families or 60 children will receive warm winter clothing. The Bicycle Programs, nine children will receive new bicycles through Wishing Wheels, a Guilford-based nonprofit. An additional 20 children have been offered refurbished bicycles through Bikes for Kids in Essex. The Fire Department and Santa Truck Collaboration, probably seen the fire truck around town a little bit now. We're currently supporting 10 Madison Youth and Family Services families in partnership with the local fire departments and Einstein's Attic to ensure that the Santa Truck is accessible to all children, including those with special considerations. The Madison Police Toy Program, the toy drive, there are 60 children registered for the Madison Police Department's Toy Program. We extend our thanks to Holly Burke and her team of volunteers, whose efforts continue to make the holiday wishes come true. And that is my report. End of report.
Thank you for that.
I hesitate to follow that.
I mean, you might as well not, Al. That was kind of a mic drop. I left you there.
The Madison 200 Committee, which is the organizational element planning for the celebrations of Madison's 200th anniversary, will soon be mailing a postcard to all residents with a description of some of the activities which will be taking place during our celebration year of 2026. There'll be additional activities developed by the committee. But this is a teaser to get folks aware of the celebration and begin to plan out the year's worth long of events.
Right.
That's it for me.
Lots going on. Any other updates? I guess that's everybody. So I just want to highlight that this is a time that people love to step up and help their community. And Scott highlighted all the different ways. So, and it takes a lot of effort also to organize those collection efforts and things like that, too. So a lot of great efforts going on in the different departments in town and different organizations. So glad for that. So I guess we'll move on to citizens' comments. Do we have any hands raised? Please raise your hand if you'd like to make a comment.
No hands raised.
Okay, going once, going twice. Okay, we'll move on to item number six, which is the Consent Agenda. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Moved.
Second.
Any further questions or comments on the consent agenda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, great. Okay. Moving on to item number seven. Discuss and take action to approve a funding request from North Madison Volunteer Fire Department in the amount of $65,000 for replacement of a fuel tank pending Board of Finance approval.
Moved. Second.
Okay, and Jeannie, is Mike Pender's on?
Yes, he's coming up as a panelist now.
Okay, great.
Are this just those standard ones that we've done all over town, right?
This is a fuel-
No, no, this is related, yeah, this is for oil, for the trucks. And they've discovered-
Got it, got it. Also not a water tank. Got it, okay.
Yeah. Go ahead, Mike. Good morning, welcome.
Morning, how are you guys? Yes, thank you for the consideration. It's our fuel supply for the apparatus. So it's kind of a, it's a critical need for us to have a diesel and gas up in the north country, so to speak. And it's also accessible for anybody in the town, any town vehicles. So if there was a loss of fuel downtown, it kind of builds in some, I guess, some continuity of operations. So there's the ability for police, EMS, highway, whoever, to get fuel from up north as well. But our existing tank was about, it was over 30 years old. And unfortunately, it reached its end of service life. And we're looking to replace it so in kind, so we can continue to maintain operations up north.
Any other questions?
Was this in CIP or is this something that's outside of CIP?
It's actually outside CIP, and I'm going to move to put it in. It was, this tank was probably installed in the mid-'90s. So we got our money's worth.
Yes, you did.
It was really just kind of off the radar. You know, we started looking into it to see if it was listed as a town asset. And I think just many, many years ago, it was put in. And, you know, it was many years ago. So it was kind of off everybody's radar.
Yeah, this is, I think for some reason the language got, this is, Stacy, if you want to weigh in, this is coming from the general fund, I think, right? So don't we need to call this a special appropriation? Or is it coming from the CIP funds? I can't remember where we landed on this. This because this was a surprise, right? It was something, you know, no one really thought about it. And then you couldn't really plan for it. Now we can, so.
Hello?
Yes.
Oh, hi, sorry. This one was not in the CIP. This has been an emergency, something that happened that we weren't expecting. And the request should say a special appropriation from Fund Balance.
Yeah, I thought it wasn't.
It did, but we changed the next line item. So by accident, they both got changed.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that's what I saw. Okay. All right, so I'll amend, actually, the motion. I'm going to amend the motion to say, discuss and take action to approve a special appropriation request from the North Madison Volunteer Department in the amount of $65,000 for replacement of a fuel tank pending Board of Finance approval.
I'll second the amendment.
Okay. Any further questions or comments on that? No? Okay, with that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, it was the next one. That's what we had made the change to. Okay.
Do you need any North Madison people to come test to make sure it's working?
Yeah, I mean, why not, right? You know, just make sure the good fuel gets in, right?
I know a Tahoe.
It probably takes a lot of fuel, right? Discuss and take action. So item number eight, discuss and take action to approve a funding request from Madison Hose Company in the amount of $19,475 for ladder truck repairs for the Madison Hose Company Number One Fire Department Apparatus Truck Replacement Fund pending Board of Finance approval.
So moved.
Again. Okay, and this is related to just using some of the money already in the truck replacement, right? Just to fix the issue with the repairing the truck. So this is not a special appropriation. So any further questions or comments on that? No? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. All right, thank you. I'm sorry, Mike, thank you for coming on earlier. Okay, item number nine on the menu, menu agenda. I'm sorry, I'm like, I still got a cold. My brain is not working this morning. Discuss timeline and funding options for MPD and Youth and Family Services Outreach Social Worker Program. So the chief had reached out. Unfortunately, he cannot, there was an unfortunate accident. So he's dealing with that right now. He cannot be on the call, but he's certainly available if we do have questions. And I think Scott Cochran is here. But this is basically, you had a presentation on this at our last meeting last month about the position and the request to transition it to full-time, as well as sunset it off the grant and start absorbing this through the budgeting process. So, and I think that the idea is that, you know, we have a great person that's already in the position that's fully grant-funded. We would not want to lose that person. And we'd ideally like to move that, to transition them into full-time starting January 1st. And then obviously, if we did that, the intention would be, it would be wholly included in next year's budget. So Stacy, I know, has just a little sheet that shows the, kind of what the impact would be. The idea is that we're going to, so Stacy, can you share that? Or does Jeannie need to share it? What happened here?
She's coming up as a panelist.
Okay.
Move Scott Cochran over to-
And Scott Cochran, please.
She switched off her phone. Hold on.
Oh, she's a real person now. It says Stacy Nobitz. Got her hand raised.
Good morning. Sorry, I was on my phone. I sent it to Jeannie if you want to share it, or I can pull it up quickly. It doesn't matter.
Yeah, Jeannie, she sent it around yesterday afternoon. So anyway, the idea is that we would apply, and there's not, no guarantees, but I think high confidence, right, that we would be able to take the funding and kind of sprinkle it out versus right now, we are scheduled to have to use all the funding for the grant by the end of this fiscal year, which would be June 30th. So the idea was sprinkle it into next year, so it kind of gently transitioned the position into the budget. So.
I found it, Jeannie.
Okay.
Can you all see it?
Yeah, keep going, Stacy.
Making it bigger for older people, yeah.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so we did an analysis based on what Scott had told me. The current model right now for my, she's 29 and a half hours a week. So that would last for the first half of the year. And then this full-time model shows what the increase to 35 and a half hours a week would result in. So for a full year at 29 and a half, it would be $64,000. To bump her up for the second half of the year, it would be $71,000 in salary, payroll taxes, the total cost is $7,300. The chief of police offered up some of his wage salaries since we're in a delay of hiring. So we thought that was an appropriate place. If we can get the grant extended, then we could absorb that $7,000 in this year's budget, the way it is. But what I wanted to highlight is what the, how the budget impacts will look for the next two years. So using the $25,000 next year to phase in the position, because we didn't have to use it this year, that would be a total impact of $57,000 or $58,000 on next year's budget, based on the $83,000 salary. And then going forward to fiscal year '28, it would be the difference of 83 again over the 57. This was not using cola or steps. I just wanted to compare apples to apples, so you can see a true impact bringing the position on. Option B, that is, if we cannot get the grant extension, then we would not use, need to use the PD $7,000. We'll use up as much as we can of the grant in this current fiscal year. But the impact next year will be much larger than it would be if we could get the extension.
You sense a likelihood of that extension?
I'll let Scott talk about that.
So having convers-, good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Thank you for your time this morning. I can't guarantee it, but I did have two conversations with our grant manager on the federal side prior to the shutdown, in which she told me, you know, like, these aren't guaranteed, but, you know, it would be fully within the norm for these types of discretionary grants for people to request and get granted extensions. And I do think we have really good justification for it. We have this excess money because the timing in which we were able to start accessing it was certainly pushed into the grant period that we were, that we had. And then finding and hiring and setting up Maya, that happened a lot slower than we had originally anticipated. So we, with those two factors that play in, which is why we still have the amount of money that we have at this point in the grant.
Also, it wasn't one of the concerns is it's a part-time position, right? You know, it's tough to fill this type of position.
That's, that's what made the search a lot more difficult. We weren't able to attract as many candidates for the position because at the time, it was, it was part-time and grant-funded and not guaranteed into the budget. So that kind of worked against us in terms of recruiting. That is very true. We were blessed to find Maya. We are absolutely thrilled to have Maya on board. If you all haven't had an opportunity to meet her, she's our initial outreach social worker. She's stationed at the police station. She's just been a great addition to our team here at Youth Services and a great addition to have at the police department to fulfill this role and this position.
So, so, you know, the idea here is that we would look to, you know, do this, get this moving in January. She would come on full-on. And then the position wouldn't be kind of considered an additional budget request when we sit at the budget, because it's kind of considered an existing position. So obviously, anything, everything's pending budget approval, right? But the idea here, and the reason I had this as kind of a vote, is to saying that we're going to support it as a new, you know, as a position in the budget going forward. So, and this shows you kind of what the impact would be. And, you know, the timeline, again, Scott, if we were to apply, you said six weeks? Is that what you're?
Yeah, so at the point we put the application in, we need to do a budget modification as well as grant extension request. I can do those at the same time. I can do those, you know, at the point where we know that, you know, this has been determined, you know, this question of her employment. And, yeah, anytime, you know, once we're ready to do it, it's just a matter of filling out the appropriate forms and putting in the request. At that point, I was told four to six weeks. It's the federal government, so I can't.
Luck with that.
That could be, that could be two weeks, that could be two months.
And the good thing with this grant is we've seen no interruptions at all in terms of being, getting reimbursements, even when it was shut down, right? Because it was through their portal or whatever. So we saw continuous reimbursement in terms of the wages and things like that for the position. So, so that's where item number 10, you know, is, you know, to actually kind of endorse that, just because this is a little unusual. I recognize that. It's outside of the budgeting process. But I think we felt strongly that it was important to get this resolved earlier so that we can retain this individual. And now we have a plan in place, you know? So otherwise, we would just have been burning through the grant money and potentially, you know, just creating a more difficult transition if we had moved forward with the full-time position.
If I could add too, she's busy enough. It's actually hard for her to get, you know, the responses back. She needs the people following up with officers with her current schedule. We've been in this sort of situation now for a number of months, really since the summer. So we're managing. She's doing the best she can to get to everybody and get to the needs that are present. She's busy enough to fully justify this being a full-time position. And in the future, if we have the position sort of centered around her, we can build this out to incorporate internships, you know? So there are police social work programs that are developed across the state. And without spending any more town money, you know, we can build around this position and invite social work students, graduate social work students, who are developing around this track to have additional resources for folks down the line. I would not envision, if there's ever a question right now, you know, would we, are we going to want two social workers or three? I don't envision that anytime in the near future. I think the one that we have is fully sufficient. However, based on the need and based on wanting to develop the concept within the state, we could certainly use this as an anchor and build it out with student interns.
Well, I know that other towns, this is a conversation at our regional council of governments, a lot of communities have added this position, which is another reason it's hard to get people who are qualified for this. So, because it's become, well, it's hard to get police officers, right? And so it is a force multiplier in the sense that, you know, it reduces additional potential needs for police services for certain families by getting, you know, people in crisis, the assistance that they need. So, so I guess with that conversation, item number 10, I'll just read that and then we can talk about, you know, approving this. Item 10 is discuss and take action to approve the addition of the Madison Police Department and Youth and Family Services Outreach Social Workers, a Town of Madison FTE position effective January 2026.
Moved.
Second. So any further comments then or questions on that? We've seen how it will impact the budget. This will go to the Board of Finance Wednesday, so they can weigh in. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I just want to, I just want to add that, you know, I appreciate and respect the conversation around the most gentle phasing from a budgetary perspective. But, you know, for my part, I don't want anybody who's watching this to think that we're not committed to this option. So even if we have to do option B, this is a position where, over the last several years, we've seen value. All those impacted and working with the program have done a great job of showing us the effect that this can have in the community. And I think, you know, as we send this to the Board of Finance, the message should be that this is an operating priority for us. And so we respect that the budget is not infinite, but this will be something that we work hard to include independent of the funding options that we have in front of us.
Good point, good point. Any other comments? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great, all right, motion passes. So thank you very much. Onto the Board of Finance. And Scott, thank you very much. You noted that for your time. So thank you very much on that. That was a good move for the town, I think. So move on to item number 11. So I want to invite our communications manager, who started with us earlier this year, Maddie Stout. I know a number of you have had the opportunity to meet Maddie. She's also been kind of charged with tracking the strategic plan implementation. So we're now, we've had two full years of the strategic plan. It was approved in December of 2023. And we haven't just put it on the shelf and dust, you know, let it collect dust. We've been working with our senior staff to ensure that they've been trying to achieve those objectives. And so we actually have a tracking spreadsheet that we've been maintaining. And Maddie is going to kind of show you a, I think she sent it out to you yesterday, or I did, I forwarded it to you, that just shows the mechanism. And this is an evolving process. So as we continue to move forward with this, I think we need to decide how we want to, you know, we can add more ways to track this, more metrics. We can talk about refreshing some of the goals, even, it's been two years and yet some of it, when you go through, you're like, huh, that doesn't seem to fit anymore or whatever. So we might want to have a refresher, like year three, next year, or a session maybe, you know, where we kind of modify it. But, so with that, I will let Maddie walk through her presentation.
Morning. As Peggy kind of shared, this is the two-year update on the tenure plan. So just to give an overview for anyone who might not know the tracking sheet, the strategic plan is tracked by a fluid internal spreadsheet that is updated in tandem with projects as they progress or are created. Um, the strategic plan is tracked by a fluid internal spreadsheet, uh, that is updated in tandem with projects as they progress or are created. It's broken down into the five key focus areas of the strategic plan. Um, and departments and staff may have projects in these, all of these areas or only some of the areas. Uh, within the key focus areas, it is further broken down by the strategic goals. Um, and these strategic goals are assigned projects, some have one, some have several. Um, and the projects can be a mix of different staff members, it's not necessarily one, uh, department assigned per strategical. Um, and then the projects are all assigned a status, so complete, the project has concluded and has no additional actions. Ongoing, um, is the project is actively moving forward, uh, or it has an annual occurrence, so it will always be ongoing. Um, this is mostly things to do with the budgetary process. Um, and then you also have pending, which are projects that have an incomplete dependency needed to proceed. Um, or they do not have an assigned staff member at this time. Uh, so the tracking sheet was created after the adoption of the strategic plan and it is maintained by senior staff. Um, and remember, it's just a fluid document and it can change as projects change, uh, work are created. So as a whole, the strategic plan is mostly ongoing sixty one point seven percent, um, twenty two point three percent complete and sixteen percent pending. Uh, so to go over kind of an overview of each key focus area, uh, we'll start with the financial and environmental sustainability. Uh, that is fifty six point five percent ongoing, twenty one point seven percent complete and twenty one point seven percent pending. Um, some highlights from this key focus area are that we launched ClearGov, which is the town's digital budget book. Um, the implementation of the Madison Investment Plan, which is the long term financial plan, um. To ensure adequate funding for capital needs and stabilize the mill rate. And the establishment of the Old Elm Street Local Historic District, um. So then moving on to how to form a government, it is about fifty fifty, so fifty four point two percent ongoing and forty five percent complete. With no pending, uh, projects. Some highlights are the current review and updates for all the boards, commissions and committees, um, to kind of streamline and condense ongoing processes. Um, and the development, the ongoing development of a new weighted, uh, priority system for CIP items, um, to create a refined, uh, priority process for spending. For modern and innovative infrastructure, it is seventy six point five percent ongoing, seventeen point six percent complete and five point nine percent pending. Um, the highlights for this key focus area are the extra mile pilot program. Um, which is a inexpensive way that anyone can get around between Madison and Guilford. Um, the creation of the Bike Walk Master Plan, um, to enhance town facilities and. Uh, make it easier to get around town via biking and walking, um, increasing accessibility to, um, town facilities. And the development of the facilities master plan, which is an ongoing process to evaluate existing town facilities to provide improved accessible and modern facilities. Um, and then we have safe and healthy community, which is ninety three point three percent ongoing, six point seven percent complete and no pending actions. Um, some overviews of this would be the Emergency Operations Center and Firehouse Expansion Project. Um, to allow more efficient emergency services, uh, that will better fit the needs of Madison. And then the Police Social Worker Pilot Program, which, uh, Scott was just talking about. Uh, and this partnership helps connect community members with resources, uh, reduces repeat calls for service and promotes long term solutions to strengthen our community. Uh, here we have thriving business and economy, here it is six point seven percent complete, thirty three point three percent ongoing and sixty percent pending. This is mostly due to, um, unassigned staff members or like we said earlier, um, incomplete dependencies on, um. Current projects. So some highlights of this are the Visit Madison site, uh, which is kind of the hub for. Uh, local recreation, historical and cultural assets, um, is a useful tool for visitors to come and see. Uh, what's going on in our community, um, and also town events, um. So like July fourth, summer concerts, the tree lighting ceremony and upcoming Madison two hundred, America two fifty events of next year. Um, and if you want to kind of get into strategic plan more, I left a link in the presentation, um, directly to it as well.
Thanks, Maddie.
Okay, great, um, so that was, uh, well done, Maddie, a nice summary of, uh, where we are in the strategic plan, um. There's a lot in there, she just highlighted some of the things, um, in the spreadsheet that just talks about action items. And, um, and what I usually try to do is have. You know, quarter, we have monthly senior staff meetings, but quarterly we meet in person. And, um, a lot of times we talk about the strategic plan a little bit as part of that senior staff discussion, so. Um, but I think there's stuff in there that needs to get flushed out a little bit more. Um, the last point that was raised about the thriving economy, I mean, that's where we don't have, uh, economic development. Resource, dedicated resource. Um, and I know we talked about potentially adding that in this year's budget, I don't know if this is going to be the year where we can do that. That'll be a conversation that we'll have to have, because we've got a number of challenges in this year's budget, but it shows a kind of a little bit of a gap. In terms of, um, you know, trying to provide, uh, some of those, address some of those strategic priorities that the board had laid out in the strategic plan, so. Um, but so I think it's, you know, maybe, um, we talk about, uh, in twenty twenty six, having a working session on the strategic plan, you know, towards the end of the year. Going through some of the items that were in there and refreshing it or, you know, trying to see how we can get these addressed, um, you know. Um, you know, for future, for future budgets or future programs or, uh, uh, things like that. Um, so any, any other comments or questions on that?
I like your idea of a, um, a structured review. Um, and I think that the three years just feels like a good, um, time to do it. I had always hoped that, um, after the strategic plan was implemented, that when a new project was introduced in. That it would have a small cover sheet on it, um, that explained how it was in alignment with the strategic plan. And I'm not sure that we've ever done that, I'm not looking for any sort of, um, you know, thesis or anything, but a, a one page cover that says. This project, um, aligns with the strategic plan in this way. And I don't think we've done that, I think that would be, uh, uh, it would be good, um, for everybody, including us. Um, to have that and it, and a worthwhile exercise for whoever is proposing. Something new.
So, uh, uh, we are trying to, to implement it as part of CIP, like to align it with one of those areas. Um, and I know that they started working on that, um, I know Galen had been working with Stacy on. Putting some sort of, um, prioritization type of, uh, method, you know, for capital projects. And then also aligning it with, with one of those buckets in this, you know, in the, in, uh, but I don't think we've completed that. So I think it's important that we do, that should be a goal for us, I think, over the next year to get that done. Um, and then also from a budget standpoint. I'd like to have the budget book at one point kind of reflect that as well. Um, so we're just not quite sure how to do that, but that would be good to have, you know, if we have a working session and talk about that, where, how it's going to, how we, you know. Different ideas about how to make that happen, so I think all good points.
Right, and then in the, in the spirit of looking back, um, like we are on the strategic plan. Um, initiatives that, that we put in place. You know, three years down the line or, or some period down the line to go back and say, did this work out the way we thought it was going to work out? Is this proven to be an effective, um, program the way we had hoped? Should we do more of it, should we do less of it?
Mm-hmm. That's probably like a year five kind of conversation, you know?
It might be, I mean, it might be, um, it, it, it might be project dependent, right?
Yeah. Um, no, I think all good points, so, um, you know, the good thing is we kind of, we got a little off to a little rocky start. Cause it's time at labor intensive to get that spreadsheet kind of populated and, and moving forward. But I think, um, we're in a good spot now to start kind of using that as a tool. Um, you know, to kind of answer some of these questions and help facilitate discussions, so.
I think it's a wonderful tracking.
Another connection point there too, um, Peggy with the P and Z side with the P O C D. You know, should we be, because there's clearly a connection with those two documents and those two plans. I'm wondering if there's, uh, you know, maybe there's another generation down the road of, of making that further connection.
Um. Yeah, I mean, I think there may be a way, I mean, it's, um. You know, I think it's a fair comment, I mean, like the, for example, the strategic plan has the updating of rezoning regulations in it, right? So that's an action item in the strategic plan. Um, and then the P O C D also has that, so there could be like, where are there overlaps between the two? Um, I think.
It would just help with alignment, I think, of some of the stuff that's sort of shared.
It kind of ticks a couple of boxes, also the affordable housing plan, also. You know, um, coastal resiliency plan, so maybe layering in additional, you know, alignments with other plans. That's a, that's a good point, we could figure out some sort of metric to, to do that in terms of housing projects, yeah. Well, I'm trying to think, I'm, I'm even the granular, like, do we add a column, do we, you know, like, kind of think about? Yeah, so, but yes, I think that's something we could incorporate into the tracking mechanism for the projects, for sure.
I mean, rega- regardless, I think, um, that we're having continued conversations and pointing to the strategic plan. And or the P O C D is awesome. Cause we have, you know, at, at, at least before we did this process, we never did that, that was not a thing. So having now the strategic plan that we point to all the time and to Bruce's point, maybe there's ways to continue to. You know, interject it into more, with more things that we do or, or evaluation points, it's great, uh, it's really very helpful.
I think it's a wonderful tracking tool, we've never had anything like this before. And I'm impressed with the amount of progress that we have made in terms of, of, uh, me- meeting some of the, uh, objectives that were laid out. I, I think it's very valuable, well worth the effort.
I think what's interesting is.
Take pause and celebrate some successes too, right? I mean, it, it forces you to look at them.
Yeah, and I think that's what came out of this is, you know, there was all these kind of high level objectives that, you know. But then when you start talking to staff, you're like, well, you're doing this, that's basically this, you know? And it helps them connect what they're doing to big picture goals and objectives, so I think that's good. It kind of, and it makes you realize a lot of people are, um, uh, you know, that a lot of good work is getting done in the departments, right? Um, and, you know, they're doing, and they're managing a lot more than what maybe the public just sees on a day to day basis interfacing with, you know, with the, with the different departments, so. Um. Okay, so, um, if we're good with that, thank you, Maddie, for that and to be continued, we'll, we'll have, try to figure out some time towards the end of twenty twenty six, I think, to do kind of a, a working session on this. And we'll move on. Um, item number twelve is discuss and take action to call special town meeting on January fourteenth, twenty twenty six in the Pulse and Auditorium. Uh, three oh two Green Hill Road, six thirty for the following item to approve a special appropriation of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars into the major roads account as per the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six capital improvement program.
Moved.
And so this is basically just calling the meeting, we approved the appropriation and the Board of Finance approved at their last meeting. And this is has to do with the, a road paving that we're trying to do, getting more funding into road paving. Um, and this is just sending the actual town meeting. So all in favor, say aye.
Just, it might be worth calling out one last time where the mo- where the money is coming from?
Uh, this is from the general fund, so the seven hundred and fifty.
Right, so this is.
Fund balance, fund balance.
This is from the undesignated fund balance, so this is not an increase in taxes or, or proposal to increase in taxes.
The money, yeah.
Right, right, we have the money, we're just applying it to making the roads better.
Yes, exactly. Um, all in favor, say aye. 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 Um, okay, uh, moving on to item number thirteen, um, so asking for any citizens' comments, please, please, uh, raise your hand if you'd like to speak and you'll be made a panelist.
No hands are raised.
I don't see any going once. Going twice, looks like we mostly have just staff on. Um, and with that, I guess, can I get a motion to adjourn? You're moved.
Moved.
All right, all in favor, say aye, all right, thank you guys. Have a great day and great, oh, actually, we'll see each other in a little over a week again, but, uh, anyway, have a great, enjoy the, the month of December, bye bye.
You too.